All right, we got everything going. We're ready to go.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is February 2nd, 2021. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, our meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. And we will be live streaming this as usual on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments or to address the city council at the appropriate time, if you're joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature down in your Zoom bar. Otherwise, if you're joining us via phone, you can use star nine that will alert our hosts that you wish to speak, and they will call on you at the appropriate time. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Balchutus, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins. Harden, you're muted.
Here.
There we go. City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese. Director of Recreation and Parks Tony Walls.
Here.
And Recreation and Parks Administrator Jennifer Button. Jennifer, you're good. All right, it's my honor this evening to present tonight's invocation. Once I'll take a moment. We are thankful for this day that it's been given to us for its opportunities and its challenges. We ask for strength, insight, wisdom, and guidance as we forge ahead, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Amen. All right, we have a special announcement tonight, and this time I'd like to recognize Mr. Ryan Kerr with Burlington Baseball. He's the owner and president of Burlington Baseball. Welcome, Ryan.
How are you doing? I think you're gonna call us the Sock Puppets now.
That's true. Very good. So the proud owner and president of the Burlington Sock Puppets.
There you go. Thanks. Yeah, thanks for having me here today. And yeah, we're thrilled about the announcement yesterday that I'm sure everyone was able to see. And yeah, what a process it's been and a pretty crazy past 12 months. And yeah, we're pretty pleased with the outcome, and the response has been nothing short of amazing. You know, fair share of criticism, but you know, the baseball world has taken it in stride and is absolutely in love with with the brand and the name and has gotten some unbelievable results. And as we went through this process, you know, the focus was on how do we connect the future into the past? And as we continue to dive into the past and the history of Burlington, there were so many different things that really came to mind from the train history, straight into the mill history, and now into biomedical. And as we look to connect the dots and build something unique, you know, the socks were a common theme, and socks are obviously so, so common in baseball. And, and there's really no other baseball team on the planet that is S-O-C-K. It's always S-O-X. And throughout the process, everyone was continuing to say, hey, we want something unique. We want something that we can build upon. And, and that's really what we, we were able to land on as we started talking with some consultants, and we started to engage with a lot of different community members. It was, hey, we want to have some fun. And I think if 2020 taught us anything, we need a little bit more fun in our lives. And, and I can certainly say that the sock puppets are probably one of the most fun things out there. So if you, if you can't watch that video clip of two sock puppets talking to themselves, if you can't watch, see those two characters and not at least put a smile on your, on your face, then there's something wrong. So we're thrilled about the brand. We're all in. I think that was our goal throughout this process was to build something that we can really be all in on, and I'm confident that, you know, this community will rally around it. And the support in 36 hours has been nothing short of amazing. So thank you, Council Mayor, for all of your support. We're so proud to be here in the city and, and cannot wait to, to put on some great sock puppet performances throughout the baseball season this upcoming summer.
Very good. And if I understand it right, you, well, I know it because you can buy gear already on the Appy League store. Folks eager like myself, I ordered my shirts last night. So anyone looking to support their pride for our new sock puppets team can already get some of your gear.
Yeah, I think as, as of like this morning, we had orders from about 30 different states and four or five different countries. So yeah, the Burlington Sock Puppets logo is going, going global, and, and we're so proud to, to be partnered here with Burlington.
It looks like the whole Appy League is having fun with their team mascots, and so it's glad to see we're, we're raising the bar with all of them to have a fun.
We set a high standard.
What's the other mascot's names in the leg so far?
So far, Johnson City just unveiled the Doughboys today, Johnson City Doughboys. And yesterday, the Bristol team nicknamed themselves the Bristol Stateliners. They're, they're right in between Virginia and Tennessee.
Yeah.
And you've added more lexicon, so now we all get to say things are sockingly different in Burlington.
Darn straight. So yeah, we will make sure that everyone's favorite cocktail, Socks on the Beach, will be served at the ballpark.
Very good. Any questions for Ryan while he's here? All right, Ryan, we appreciate your continuing work and dedication to Burlington. As you can see behind our manager's screen, the beautiful picture of the sunset at the ballpark, and we look forward to seeing lots of families out there having a blast this coming season. And I heard of the Socksize Shadow today.
Yeah, he did. It's gonna be a great summer.
Very good. Well, I appreciate it, Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor.
Take care. We have another special report this evening from our Recreation and Parks Department. I'd like to recognize Director of Recreation and Parks Tony Laws, as well as Jennifer Button regarding their new Civic Rec software.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's always a pleasure to be able to speak to you. And certainly at this time, we're rolling out a new software operating system that will really improve our operation as well as better serve our citizens, and that's what we always want to do. Civic Rec is, is the name of our new software. It's, it's a part of Civic Plus, who probably a lot of you know is the provider of our city's website. So, so it's a very good company, and they spent a lot of time working on this program for us, and, and our staff and others worked on it too. This replaces some old software that we had that was one of the first Recreation and Park softwares available. There wasn't back when we, we bought that software, there wasn't very many choices and everything. And so it served us a long time and, and did well, but it hadn't been enhanced or updated in, in recent years. So, so we needed something better, and, and so that's why we made the decision to go to Civic Plus. I want to mention a few names real quick that really helped us make this transition. A former IT employee along with us, unfortunately, Chad Cross, spent a lot of time. He was our leader in the very initial stages of this program and, and really made a lot of difference in getting us lined up with a, with a good product and, and vetting everything and, and, and leading us in the right direction. We also had from IT Dawn Green relatively new with us, but she and three technicians, Matt, Robert, and Walt from the IT department really spent a lot of time helping us on getting this installed and especially with the hardware part of it. Finance staff, Peggy and her staff, certainly this, this software has to tie into our MUNIS system. And so they were very helpful in getting us online to, to make sure that we were, the stuff that we were doing was being transferred into the MUNIS system on the financial end. So we thank finance. And then I got two special staff members that I want to thank because they spent a lot of time and effort on this themselves individually and together, and also working with our other staff members to make sure we were all up to speed on this. And that's Melissa Houst and Jennifer Button. Melissa couldn't be here tonight because of another commitment, but Jennifer Shear, and she's going to be talking to you shortly with a little demo and some of the key aspects of the software program. And lastly, I don't want to leave out all of our recreation staff. This, this software crosses a lot of different divisions in our department, and everybody had to pitch in and do their part, whether it was athletics or childcare, youth programming, aquatics, you name it, everybody had to have a, have a part of it. And so, and we're gonna incorporate on a gradual basis, a lot of the different divisions that we did not have on, on the, on the software program before, like our lakes, pretty far out. And so we're getting them involved in this too. So it'll be a total recreation department-wide product. So I want to thank all of our staff members that put in a lot of hours too and, and trained themselves on how to operate this software, and they're a very dedicated and hardworking bunch. So Jennifer's with us, and she's gonna give you a little update on what our program does and also show you our main page on the website, correct, Jennifer?
Correct.
Go ahead, it's up to you.
So I just want to thank Rachel and Tony for the opportunity to venture outside of ActiveNet to find new software that would not only help online customers, it would also benefit walk-in customers as well because they are also very important to our community and the function of our department. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen with you guys. And give me just a second. No, that's not it. Sorry, bear with me. This is the first time I've.
That's all right. We'll let you know when that screen comes up.
All right. Everybody good?
Yeah.
I'm gonna turn off my video if y'all don't mind, just because I feel like I would be more comfortable, if that's okay?
Sure.
All right. Yeah, this is better for me. So Civic Rec is a cloud-based software that will streamline reservations and registration throughout the department. This here is the main public page that folks will see whenever they click on the link from the website. Civic Rec will serve as the department's catalog to programs and facility rentals. Due to COVID, unfortunately, we do not have many programs listed because we're not offering as many as we normally would. But we have been working in the background to ensure that as soon as these facilities become available and the programs become available, we'll be ready to post those, and they're set to go as soon as we get that okay. Um, with our previous software, online registrations and reservations were not utilized because customers found it difficult to navigate. Civic Rec is gonna improve the online user experience. Have full confidence of that for sure. It's the user-friendly navigation of the catalog. So this is what we refer to as the catalog. The welcome message is gonna tell folks how they can initially register for an online account. The online account is the same account that they would get if they come into the office, so they can use it in both aspects. It doesn't have to only be used for online registrations. So we have many filters over here. We're gonna use Kickball because it's already there to search, and it'll show you what we have for Kickball. And since there's nothing going on, we've just told them that right now there's no registration being held, that they cannot sign up for Notify Me to get those notifications. We have all of our facilities within the Recreation Department listed here by location. City Park is the one, or one of the ones that I am most familiar with. When someone won't, have you not know what's doing that?
So everyone at home knows that we are in soft launch mode. We fully expect that we some bugs along the way, and so we're in soft mode on this.
Yeah. I may need to log out and log back in on, actually. It's been up for a while.
It just went live yesterday, Mayor.
Yep. Well, it's, I'll, I'll have to look into that, but here's Fairchild. We'll use that one as an example. It tells, it gives the amenities of the facility. They can the calendar. Well, you know what? These are, it's because they're not available online right now, so you're not gonna be able to see. We have them blocked off because they're not rentable right now. So unfortunately, I apologize for that. As we add divisions to this software, we'll add more catalog tabs to the top. But right now, we're limited to what we can offer. The ease in creating an online account, that is exactly what has happened. I have been logged out. Can y'all tell I'm nervous?
Come on, Jennifer, just look at the camera. Don't worry about it.
I can't, I can't even type my password. Gosh. Okay, so look, when you create an account, you can come here, and even if you don't want to come into the office for all of your, or if you want to come into the office to make all your payments into a register, you can still utilize your online account from your home. You can get your tax information for your child's after-school summer camp. Here to the left, you have your account information, and you can add family members as needed. In the middle, you can view your notifications, upcoming events, registrations, and rentals would show up here. And then over here on the right are your account options, and they would help you manage and search for important account information within your family. Outside of the user experience, Civic Rec has allowed us to implement a POS system at community centers, Pool, City Park, and the lake facilities. Previously, they were unable to use credit cards due to them still being paper and pencil for recording. One huge benefit is that these facilities can now accept credit cards, facilities that offer membership or punch card classes, now have the ability for members and cardholders to have branded, a branded card that is scanned at entry. It has so many functions. I do encourage you guys, if you want to go to the city website, things to do, Parks and Recreation or Recreation and Parks, and then create yourself an account and just, you never know, you may want to go on one of Melissa's heights. So I thank you guys for taking the time to look at all the hard work that Recreation has put into building this software. I do believe that the public will engage with open arms. I think it's gonna be great for the community as well as staff. And I can't wait for you guys to see what it, what the potential it has for our department.
Definitely. Well, thank you, Jennifer. To City Council, any questions for Jennifer and Tony?
Just seems like a good use of time during COVID to put together something like this.
So we didn't wish.
We had the time to do that with COVID, so we were very thankful for that, yes.
Yeah, we didn't wish COVID to come, but it certainly did create some time for staff. And also, we didn't have a lot of programs going on because of the pandemic, so it freed up some time. But one person I did not mention that I want to mention in this process is Rachel Kelly, our boss for Recreation and Parks. And she was with us every step of the way and encouraging and helping us in any, any and all ways that she could. So Rachel, thank you very much.
Well, I say thank you to the team. For those of you who've been following what Burlington's been doing with Burlington Smart, Burlington Connected, we've, I think, really gone a long way to putting our, our city's resources at people's fingertips online. And that's something you don't always see. You don't see very often on cities and counties' websites. A lot of it's that prime information and access to sign up to stuff is, is still rooted in the pen and paper face-to-face world. And I think we've really opened the door for our citizens to access the full wealth of services that our city offers, which also helps them realize all the resources that are available to them as a resident here in the City of Burlington. And I want to commend our staff for taking the time and the hard work that goes on behind the scenes to upload this data, to make sure that it works, that it, it helps people along the way, and to strive for improvements in service. I still remember signing up for our softball leagues years ago and having to go in with my payment and sign up there in the office. And I know, I really appreciate that now you can do it online. So, great work.
Mayor, when I played softball, I had to do the same thing.
I think I even had to bring a utility bill to prove that I lived in the city limits and.
It was because there was no internet then, but.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Jennifer, and the whole team. Thank you. All right, this time we'll recognize our interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None.
All right, we have two additions to our agenda this evening. Consent agenda item F, Home Funding RFP and Applicant Approval, and New Business Item Two, Appeal Request for the Public Hearing of Hinson Realty LLC. So that's 1722 Shamrock Drive. Do I hear a motion to approve the add-ons to our agenda? So move.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve these add-ons? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda with the additions. Do I hear a motion from council in a second to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A, to approve two reclassifications for the following police department positions effective upon city council approval. The crime analyst from level 19 to level 26, and police crime analyst supervisor from level 27 to level 31. Item B, to approve amendments to the Charter of the Community Police Advisory Team, or CPAT. Item C, to adopt a resolution to accept from the state of North Carolina the release of the conservation easement deed recorded in Alman's County Deed Book 2795, pages 535 and 56 through 565, for property which runs through City Park alongside Little Alman's Creek. Item D, to approve budget amendment 2021-21 for the John Robert Kernodle Senior Center to use 2020 to 2021 CARES Act grant funds awarded by the PTRC for equipment purchases for the Senior Center Technology Training Program. Item E, to approve budget amendment 2021-22 for the allocation of funds to the Downtown Grants Program of the Burlington Downtown Corporation. And item F, to approve two proposals from Home Funded Affordable Housing Development Projects and direct city staff to coordinate with the applicants to develop a scope of services, funding terms, documents, and to proceed with the projects. I hear a motion from council to approve the foregoing consent agenda items.
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we have two items of new business. The first item of new business, city council will consider adopting a resolution authorizing the sale and issuance by the City of Burlington, North Carolina of its Combined Enterprise Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2021A, authorizing the mayor, city manager, and director of finance to sign and execute said documents, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents therewith. This time, I'd like to recognize our Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. I'm going to briefly go over a little history for the benefit of any first-time viewers that we may have. You may recall that the December council work session, staff asked council for permission to send out a private bank RFP to see what interest there may be on private banks to be able to compare this interest rates to the public market for refinancing. At the January 19th council meeting, staff reported that the city received seven responses, the winning bid offering a 1.33% interest rate with savings of approximately $6 million dollars over the remaining life of the revenue bonds, or about $400,000 a year. At that meeting, council approved a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the LGC, requesting the LGC sell the bonds at a private sale and authorize and approve the selection of the refinancing team in connection with the sale and issuance of the bonds. As a reminder, the city has, currently has three series of revenue bonds, 2010 As, 2010 Bs that were issued in 2010, and then the 2011 revenue bonds issued in 2011. The refinancing of these bonds will take place in two issuances. We are here tonight for the first half of the refinancing, refinancing the 2010 As and 2010 Bs, and they will be known as the 2021 As. Next month, we will come back and do the remaining half, which will be the 2021 Bs. The reason we're doing this in two pieces is because at the end of 2017, federal tax law changed and lent and eliminated tax-exempt advanced refunding. Due to this legislation, banks have created what is called a Cinderella option. In very basic terms, the bonds are issued as taxable until the original bonds are eligible for tax-exempt status. That's what we'll be doing with the 2011 revenue bonds. They're about one year away from being eligible to be refinanced with tax-exempt refinancing. Tonight, staff recommends that council approve the attached resolution authorizing the sale and issuance by the city of its Combined Enterprise System Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2021A, and authorizing the mayor, city manager, and director of finance and risk management to sign and execute the delivery of documents in connection herewith. As stated before, we'll be back in a month to complete the refinancing with the 2021 Bs, refinancing the 2011 revenue bonds at that time. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Peggy. Any questions from council regarding this item? All right, Peggy, we appreciate your staff's work on this and identifying the opportunity to save our taxpayers' money. Do I hear a motion from council to approve this item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Great work, Peggy. I'm delighted to make a motion to approve this.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Very good. Motion to approve from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you again, Peggy. We appreciate Charles' work on this. With that, we'll move to item two of our new business. City council will consider an appeal and request to set a date of public hearing from Hinson Realty LLC for property located at 1722 Shamrock Drive, formerly known as Shamrock Golf Course, references Alman's County Tax Identification Number 130754. And this time, I'd like to recognize Ryan Moffett from Vernon Law Firm. Ryan, are you with us?
Yes. Can everyone hear me okay?
You can.
Good, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As a mayor stated, my name's Ryan Moffett with the Vernon Law Firm across the street from the city at 522 South Lexington Avenue. Lawson Brown and I represent Hinson Realty LLC in this application to amend the conditional zoning Uh, in this application to amend the conditional zoning uh, of the property at seventeen twenty-two Shamrock Drive owned by Hinson Realty. Um, this is a request to amend conditional zoning ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-one, which council adopted back in September, uh, on September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Uh, we were before the planning and zoning commission at its last meeting on January the twenty-fifth. Um, planning and zoning commission voted four to two uh, on an unfavorable recommendation and in response, we have, uh, we are requesting an appeal uh, and to set a public hearing before council for the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Uh, we have submitted a written request to Ms. Smith in that regard. Um, but uh, are renewing that request before you this evening. I would appreciate that setting of a hearing for uh, the sixteenth of this month. Happy to answer any questions that you all have on that as well.
Very good. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions from council regarding their request to set a date of public hearing for our February sixteenth city council meeting?
I, I have a question. Ryan, this is Bob Ward here. I've got a question. Is uh, is this unusually time sensitive? Do you need, do you need the February sixteenth setting? No, we, you know, we've got a couple other things going on, you know, this. I'm just gonna guess and I'm probably gonna be right. This is gonna take some time. It's gonna be fairly involved. Uh, I mean, if you say February sixteenth, you know, is what you gotta have. I'm sure the, the council would consider it favorably, but I was thinking about a date in March. Let me stop there and let you respond.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. I think I would say our client is eager to, to proceed with this. Um, and, and on that basis, we're, that's why we're requesting February sixteenth and and uh, also just because that, that would be the natural uh, landing spot for this hearing, I think, in order to give everybody the, the proper notice. Um, I would say there were surprisingly little um, public comment at the planning and zoning commission meeting. I think um, Mr. Lee uh, or the planning department in general sent out ninety notices to adjoining property owners. Uh, and I think we had one property owner and one attorney uh, who, who's the attorney that uh, represents uh, the property owners that, that are suing our client. Uh, but those were the, if I recall, the only two public comments. I, I, I think for, for the sake of the, the length of the meeting, I'm, I'm hoping it, it stays that way, but that's all to say it's your all's prerogative as to when you'd like to set this hearing. What's most important is that the hearing happens.
Well, I'm sorry. Hearing and I'll refer to all the council members as to, you know, what they think best, but certainly again, I'm in favor. Uh, I, I'll start to vote for a hearing, so let me stop there.
And other council members, any questions for Mr. Moffett? Is there any council, I guess, any council objection to the February sixteenth date? I think we shifted a few items around last night at our work session.
I, I would be fine with the sixteenth. I, I know this thing's been going on for quite some time. I'm sure all parties are eager to, 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 to get it uh, some resolution to it.
Sixteenth is good for me.
Sixteenth is fine.
I, I'd make a motion that we approve uh, that we set a date of public hearing for uh, February sixteenth to hear this matter.
Thank you, council member. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve from council member Butler, seconded by council member Ward. Any further discussion or questions regarding this item? All right, with that, uh, all those in favor of motion to approve the public hearing for February sixteenth, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with council, or with votes for myself, mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Thank you, Mr. Moffett, for being with us this evening.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
That concludes our regular business items this evening. Next is our public comment period. Public comments could be emailed to the publiccomments@burlingtonnc.gov email address until five PM today. Um, and then comments can also be made now during the meeting. If you're joining us via Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature in your Zoom bar. If you're joining us via phone, you can use star nine now to let our host know that you wish to speak. If you are having any technical difficulties uh, during this public comment period, you can contact John Vernon at three three six five one three five four four zero. So uh, anyone joining us who wishes to speak during this public comment period, now is your opportunity. Please use that raise hand feature or star nine. While we're letting folks uh, chime in if they need to. Uh, clerk, do we have any public comments that were submitted electronically?
No, there were no public comments submitted by email today.
Thank you very much. Again, reminder to anyone joining us on the call, now is your opportunity to submit a public comment. Use the raise hand feature in your Zoom bar or star nine if you're joining us by phone. All right, it looks like we have no request for public comment, so with that, we will move on to city council comments. City council members, any, any comments or items you want to bring up?
Um, there was, uh, I went to the United Way Community Council meeting this morning that was with um, Tony Loguadichi from the health department. And something that he said, and I'm referring to the senior center doing the computer training. Um, they asked about uh, whether or not there was a problem getting seniors notified, even though uh, they may not be computer savvy. And he said that the word of mouth option for seniors has been incredible. Um, that they haven't had any problem with people being alerted that this is available. So I, I don't know if anybody's watching tonight, but spreading the word about this computer training that uh, we've gotten the grant for at the senior center. Uh, get it started because it's a, it's a great opportunity for people who have wanted, have been curious and wanted to learn how to use the, the computer and the internet.
Very good. Any other council comments this evening?
Yeah, mayor, I, I, I'd just like to, to uh, or shout out to the, everybody involved so far with the uh, COVID vaccination effort. Uh, I had a chance to volunteer last Monday over at the stadium. The first day, the stadium was used uh, for the second shots or the parking lot and it was, I was, I was amazed at how, how organized it was and people coming in on time and, and literally the, the line itself did not take very long. I had emailed uh, Harden earlier uh, yesterday. I think I copied the council members. The one thing that I noticed on, on the uh, from being there checking people in was a um, a substantial um, a surprising uh, number of, of uh, first of all, people were on, on time. It's great, but one thing we missed, I think, was an awful lot of working people. I, I simply didn't see um, many people of Hispanic culture or many African Americans, and this is their second shot now. So evidently, at that particular day, they had to have the first shot. Um, I think it would have been January the fourth. I know we've been a strain about getting vaccines out, but I wonder sometimes if we could, again, confer with our friends and our colleagues at the county about the possibility of, of, of offering some of this, this vaccination some even at night or on weekends when we have people who are working jobs that simply um, they don't have the ability to take off during the normal day, morning or Monday through Friday work hours that, that many of these functions are going on now. I did see today that uh, beginning next week, there's gonna be some, uh, some vaccines sent to uh, uh, pharmacists now, not, not a ton, but um, I just wondered about, about, about checking those people in for four and a half hours and, and was kind of taken away about the lack of, of those populations that I mentioned. Uh, would a, a time that might fit some of their work schedules be more uh, uh, open for them to get involved and, 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 and take their vaccines?
I think that's a very good comment. So manager, if you could share that with our partners and obviously as the different phases progress, look for creative opportunities to make sure we're able to reach all of our residents.
Will do. Yes, sir. We uh, we, as you all had, had directed us uh, several weeks ago, we're all in in terms of resources, uh, personnel, anybody we can uh, offer to help. We have firefighters helping with, we actually do in vaccinations and being the EMT support while you wait. We have, I think we've identified five or six police officers that have EMT certifications that are working this as a uh, second job to help with vaccinations. Obviously, our events staff uh, know how to do drive-through events uh, and have, have been able to help uh, at both locations and uh, we, we will, we, we, we're in a uh, every morning meeting uh, with the county uh, health department staff, so we will make sure and voice all those uh, comments, Mr. Owen, and get that into, into their uh, into their uh, planning efforts. I do know that they, someone will pivot uh, anticipating school starting again in March, they will pivot away from C-Tech to Eric Lane. Uh, using some of the, the parking lots and facilities there and I know we're, we're heavily involved in uh, helping with those logistics and that may be the time they can pivot uh, and offer some different times, but we will, uh, we'll get those conversations. We'll get those ideas in the conversation beginning tomorrow morning.
If I heard council member Owen right, I think we're giving Chick-fil-A a run for their money on a efficient drive-through, so.
Hey, uh, there's the guys over there last Monday. I don't think maybe fifteen, twenty minutes from time they came in and we checked their name. Got in line, never got out. They had to get out of the car. Uh, it was great for especially some of the older population they went through and uh, and it went well.
Very good. Any other council comments? As always, I've got a couple this evening. I, I do want to, again, um, recognize our, our new sock puppet team. We're excited to, to have the buzz going on. Uh, I'm excited to see kids in the stands with their sock puppets and tell uh, having fun at a ballgame this coming season. Um, and I had the opportunity to watch a documentary the other week about, it's from twenty twelve about the Portland Mavericks. Um, but fantastic documentary about just how communities embrace baseball um, and uh, the life and joy that it can bring to the community. So uh, a great documentary with Kurt Russell in it. Um, but also want to invite folks, tomorrow is our next installment of the community reading of our mayor's book club book. Our book this month is Cast from Isabel Wilkerson. Uh, she also wrote Warmth of Other Suns, um, about the Great Migration. Um, this is a much more recent title. Challenging book about racism and cast in our society and the history of our nation and around the world. Um, but we're looking forward to a, a healthy discussion at noon tomorrow facilitated through Alamance County Public Libraries. I do want to recognize that our staff has put together a community blood drive at City Park on February tenth. So if you, uh, like me and you like giving blood and, and helping out your community in that way, uh, you can sign up for a donation appointment between ten AM and three PM on February tenth using the code CITYPARK and uh, help our community out during these challenging times. And then um, lastly, I, we had had some conversations in previous council meetings about uh, the way we do our city council elections and obviously it's twenty twenty-one. It's an odd number year, which means it's a municipal election year here in Alamance County. Um, and I know we're, we're planning to have some discussions going on through the year about the way our charter is written. Um, but I wanted to formally ask if, if council's amenable to us receiving a staff report uh, at a future work session, maybe in March, just about what, what we've paid uh, to run our elections. Obviously, we, the board of elections runs elections, but they run them based on our charter documents and then the city of council cuts them a check. Um, and so it's my understanding should be pretty easy for staff to pull together that report, but I'm just curious, kind of, what do we pay for a primary and a general election over the last maybe ten years? As we put that as a foundation for our discussion. So any objection from council to us receiving a staff report at a future work session possibly in March?
Oh, I mean, I don't have a problem with it at all. I know we've got a lot of things we've asked for uh, staff to come up with, so I wouldn't put that as a priority. I would, I, I certainly would like to hear it as well as you and I have a, a lot of respect for the request. But we've thrown a lot of things at them, so let's, let's be sure we're taking care of some of the other things that we put out there.
Sure. March is reasonable or if uh, they need more time as appropriate.
I'll get with the finance uh, team tomorrow.
Very good. All right, um, that's all I had. So any other council comments? Manager, any adjustments?
No, sir.
All right, so reminder, get your sock puppets gear at the Appy League Baseball Store and uh, hope everyone has a, a good rest of your evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, have a good week. Thank you.
Aye.